City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Suffernin. Alderman Ravel. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
We have Requiem.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, June 24, 2019 Evanston City Council meeting. We have all nine Aldermen here tonight. Just one announcement this month, while it may not feel as warm as we're used to, or not as much rain as we're, or more rain than we're used to, is National Park and Recreation Month. And we have a lot of parks and a lot of recreation opportunities here in Evanston. And as I think we all know, parks contribute certainly to the quality of our community, to the health of our citizens, to our economic and environmental well-being. In case you're curious, we have like 75 parks, or something along those lines, right, Mr. City Manager? Seventy-five parks in eight square miles, so there is a park near you. So what I'd like to do is have our Parks and Rec Director, unless he looks a little surprised, come on up to the podium and just highlight the important things that surround Park and Recreation Month. I know we have one coming up on the Fourth of July, so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Clerk Reed, Members of Council, City Manager Bockowitz, Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks and Rec. Real quick, just kind of, we have, I want to highlight the activities surrounding the Fourth of July for us this coming up. We are going to have a number of activities, and we take the Fourth of July very seriously as part of our Parks and Recreation Month activities. So you have several locations in the city that include the following: some schools and parks. Lincolnwood School, Willard School, Cayman East Park, which is our partners at Ridgeville, Baker Park, Martin Luther King Art School, Raymond Park, and Foster Field. All will have playground, games, and activities the morning of the Fourth of July, starting at 9:00 a.m. As we lead up to the afternoon parade, parade kicks off at 2:00, and then we will celebrate our annual Fourth of July on the lakefront with our annual fireworks. So really exciting time for us. Also, I would like to highlight, we're going to do some special activities for staff for Parks and Rec Month. So we're going to do some of our regular recreation activities that we do with the public, with our staff. As you can see on the board, the dates are there. We'll do broom ball over at Robert Crown for staff during lunchtime. We're going to do something new this year. We're going to partner with our partners, or some of our farmers at the Farmers Market, and do a healthy cooking class led by our farmer, by our market master. We're going to play kickball, which has probably become the annual most popular event, right outside here behind the Civic Center with staff located in this facility on July 12th. We're going to do a canoeing trip down our canal. Unfortunately, though, this year, we will have to start at the Oakden entrance, and it's opposed to the Ecology Center, but we will still do it this year. We're going to also do some indoor activities. We're going to do some painting with colors over at Noize, and then we'll wrap up the month celebration with tennis and pickleball over at James Park. So really excited about our upcoming month to celebrate and recognize Parks and Rec Month.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway, and thank you to all your staff and all the work that they do year-round, but particularly in the summer months when so many people are using all the recreation facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing, Mr. Mayor. We also have free beach days as well in the month. Those days are all posted on the website.
And how many, because you know, whenever we get on the beaches, I always ask this question, how many beach passes did the city give out this year to income-qualified?
So this year, we're about 1,300 this year.
Thirteen hundred, okay.
That's correct.
Terrific. And if somebody would like and needs sort of an income-qualified beach pass, they can just come to your office or one of the other facilities.
My office or any community center.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
All right, excellent. City Manager, any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. Just a few more words about the Fourth of July. We do have a parade. The parade's theme this year is a salute to community volunteers, and the grand marshal of this year's parade is Dick Peach, perhaps the greatest, if it's fair to say, if he's not the greatest community volunteer there is in Evanston, he's certainly top five. So it's real exciting, and many of you know Dick is very involved in the parade, is stepping back just a little bit this year from those duties to serve as grand marshal. Another piece that is pure Evanston is our local ordinance that deals with putting out seats, couches, other ways to save your spot for your viewing of the parade on Central Street. You cannot do this until Monday, July 1st, at 6:00 a.m. So we will pick up any chairs, any tape on the ground prior to that, but as of 6:00 a.m. July 1st, residents are free to save their spot for the parade. Any of you who have been around at 7:00 a.m. on July 1st will know that many of the good spots are already taken by 7:00 a.m. on July 1st. But we do ask people to keep the right-of-way clear. Please do not block sidewalks, be mindful of that. So lots happening. You can see all this on our website, cityofevanston.org. Looking forward to another great day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite, you have something to add there?
Mr. Mayor, I was just hoping the City Manager, can you please comment regarding the use of fireworks?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Appreciate your mentioning that fireworks of any sort are illegal in the city of Evanston. The Police Department has a zero tolerance to that. If people hear fireworks, they should call 911. We will be out, I'm sure, starting this weekend. Jeff D., Chief Dugan, is here. I don't know if you care to comment anything. I know that the department is already looking at its deployment for the Fourth of July period. If you want to maybe come up and just talk a little bit about that. The days before, we have neighbor communities that have public fireworks displays on the Third of July traditionally, so that I think gives some people license, or they think gives them license, to start their own affairs. Chief, since you're here, maybe you could talk just a little bit about the department's enforcement plans?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, City Clerk, Alderman, we started planning a few months ago for the Fourth of July. We have, in our deployment meetings, and we go out and try to sense about social media, press releases, that we, there's zero tolerance on the Fourth of July. Just call the police, we'll come out. If we could catch individuals, we'll cite them or arrest them, whichever is necessary. So I know we get a lot of calls on the Fourth for fireworks, and as well as weekends leading up to it, so we're already ramping up our efforts to, in order to deal with the fireworks as they come along.
They are not safe. I think we have had multiple incidents over the years of people setting off fireworks and doing bodily harm to each other, so we just really, we spent a lot of energy and time in this community to celebrate the Fourth of July. We do it very safely at the lakefront with professional technicians lighting off a beautiful fireworks display, all sponsored and paid for by the Evanston Fourth of July Association. So we really encourage everyone, take advantage of one of the best fireworks displays in the Chicago area, come out to that, leave the illegal fireworks to others, enjoy the fireworks that we have in Evanston. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thanks.
Thank you, City Manager. Mr. Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, my one announcement for today is the Clerk's Office is holding an event on Wednesday, July 17th. This is the first event of, while it doesn't feel like summer yet, of our summer series of events. Every summer and during the winter, we do a series of events. In the past, we've done events such as parliamentary procedure, various other events. We had Governor Quinn come in once. And this event is about a ethics ordinance and lobbying ordinance and whistleblower ordinances. So we're going to have Steve Berlin, who is the Executive Director of the Chicago Board of Ethics, and he's been in that role since 2008, come in and discuss ethics, as well as our own Jennifer Billingsley and LJ Alul, who both serve on the Evanston Board of Ethics. And so we'll have a discussion about local ethics laws, as well as whistleblower protection laws and lobbyist ordinance. So we're looking forward to that. Again, that is Wednesday, July 17th at 6:00 p.m. here at the Civic Center. Only announcement, thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. We're now going to move into public comment, and I'm going to, given the number of people that we have signed up for public comment, ask that everybody keep your comments to a minute thirty. So a minute thirty for public comments. Clerk Reed will keep track of that time. The City Manager will keep track of the overall time. So the way public comment works is we set aside 45 minutes. At the 45-minute mark, we then will move into the council's agenda and conversation amongst the council. So I'm just asking everybody to be respectful of each other's allotted time up here. And again, if you get to that point, we're going to give a real quick, wrap it up, and please wrap it up in 10 seconds, and we'll get through this in 45 minutes. So welcome. I'm going to, I'll list off the three names every time, so you know who's in order. If you would just get up and get ready to speak, we'll go that way. As always, I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name, which I'm prone to do at times. Let's start with Alejandra Abenez, and then Linda Del Bosque, and then Sergio Hernandez. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Council, City Clerk, City Manager, and community members. My name is Alejandra Ibanez. I'm an Eighth Ward resident, and I stand here with members of the 2017 Welcoming Committee that worked with you just two years ago to pass the most recent welcoming city ordinance that actually serves as some of the strongest, the strongest ordinance in the U.S., meant to protect our most vulnerable immigrant and refugee residents in Evanston. And I also welcome any community members who've signed our petition to join us. We are here and have come together to denounce the use of the Cook County Department of Homeland Security in Emergency Response van that was used during the Custer Street Fair Festival earlier this month. It's our position that the president, that the presence of this vehicle, which served as a street barricade and weather center at the fair, brought fear and distrust into our community, and we request that all Evanston officials commit to not using this vehicle at community events in the future. While we understand that truck was put there with resident safety in mind, the reality is that DHS stokes fear and anxiety in our immigrant neighbors and friends, the very Evanston residents for whom we created the welcoming city ordinance. DHS and the Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, have been extended great powers to racially profile, criminalize, detain, and deport community members, including children and babies, at unprecedented levels under the Trump administration. And while we understand that DHS includes branches and responsibilities that are unrelated to immigration, we also recognize that the boundaries between federal, state, and local departments, including Cook County, are being increasingly blurred under the current administration. We also understand that the perception of local law enforcement working in concert with any branch of DHS will have a deeply damaging impact on the trust that has been built in this town. The threat was underscored last week when DHS reported that ICE would be preparing for mass arrests of immigrants, including in the Chicago region. We started a petition that now has 500 and growing signatures, making it clear that DHS is not welcome in Evanston. Therefore, we, the undersigned, call on you as community decision-makers to once state that you understand the threat that DHS poses to Evanston residents, commit to not using DHS vehicles or staff anywhere in Evanston, including at the upcoming July Fourth Parade, and commit to finding alternative ways to protect all Evanston residents. Further, we call on you to better train yourselves and your staff, so public safety decisions protect all Evanstonians, especially those most vulnerable in our community, and immediately implement an equity impact assessment tool that assures the impact of future decisions does not harm historically marginalized Evanstonians. We recognize that this is not just for immigrants, but for U.S.-born, Black and Brown community members. An ordinance is not enough. Evanston must do better. Evanston must act better. We call on your collective response to these demands, and we'll leave a copy for the City Clerk of the petition, the signatures, and comments made by over 50 community residents in Evanston.
Thank you, Alejandra. All right. Linda Del Bosque, Sergio Hernandez, then Mike Vasilko.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Thank you, and thank you, community members, for being here this evening. I am hoping that this incident that took place at Custer Fair really, really takes a movement here in Evanston. It's that time, it's that time that we come together as Latinos, and we put together our voices, and we're heard, we're at the tables, we're sitting here with you, not only coming to talk to you in public comment, but to sit here and actually have a relationship with you. Trust, loyalty is something that we have, we have been, it's been taken away from us for many years. And as you can see at the Hill, and what's going on, and around us, it doesn't, it's not easy. It's not easy going to public events and then seeing this truck. It creates trauma. I was very sad, I was very emotional about this this past weekend, and nothing, I mean, if anyone knows how aggressive I am, nothing ever breaks me, and this here definitely broke me, because I made a promise to the city of Evanston as working hard and as a community leader, that I will bring unification, inclusion, equity, transparency. And it's so sad that I've been living here for almost five years, I can only imagine living here for 20 years, that this has been going on. Please make this the last time that we bring this truck, for kicks and giggles, for safety, whatever, please think of the people of color, especially Latino community. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Sergio, let's see, is Sergio here, Hernandez? He's on his way. Okay, let's go ahead, Mike Vasilko, then we got Harris Miller, then Michael Neighbors.
Thank you. Mike Vasilko, 27, 28 Rees. I'm here tonight to ask you to restore Devon Reed's full authority as the only FOIA officer for Evanston. Devon, if Devon says he needs more help, provide the budget he needs to hire his staff for his office. We're asking for the council to schedule a new vote on this matter as soon as possible. Mr. Mayor, you brought, the method you brought that item to the council was political, and we believe illegal. So we're asking for you to reschedule a vote, to put things back the way they were. Item 812, the library parking lot, that keeps popping up. Staff is asking again for direction. I think the direction was no. No in all languages, no is no. Please file it, accept it as presented to you, but file it and put it in a drop box and lock the door. There are new FOIA, I'm sorry, new Robert Crown LOIs have been posted. We're asking you to tear them up. The LOIs with Northwestern, Beacon Academy, Chicago Youth Hockey, Evanston Youth Hockey include meager contributions, contributions that ultimately will just cause Evanston's middle and low-income citizens to subsidize the private wealthy users. These agreements block family and school use of the gym and the ice time during the most desirable periods. Please do not accept these LOIs.
I need to wrap up, Mike.
Okay. Get the Friends of Robert Crown to commit to the $17 million of cash payments towards construction that they have been advertising for years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Harris, come on up, Harris Miller, then Michael Neighbors, and then Darlene Cannon.
Good evening. Harris Miller, Fourth Ward. City residents demand accountability with FOIA. We have the right to full and complete information on city government. The Police and Law Department should not control FOIA. There was no majority vote following the Memorial Day proposal, leaving this little time to review the agenda item. It went against best governing practices. Please motion to reinstate Clerk Reed as our chief FOIA officer. Also, the deal between Parks and Rec and Beacon Academy to use our new Robert Crown facilities should be made with equity for Evanston's youth at the forefront. Finally, thank you for choosing the safer road option for Elgin Road. It's a much more fiscally responsible choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Harris. Reverend Neighbors, Darlene Cannon, then Ruth Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, and Members of City Council. I think I'm here for two things, so I'm hoping that you might give me three minutes. I think I signed up twice. The first thing that I'd like to share-
It doesn't work that way, Reverend. If it worked that way, we'd never get out of here. I needed to keep it to a minute and a half.
I'll say it as quickly as I can. First of all, Resolution 46R19 designating the portion of Florence Avenue between Lake Street and Greenwood Street with the honorary name Ernest W. Jackson Way. We have Members of Second Baptist and the community who are here. I would ask if you would join me, please, if you're able, and as you come, I will speak with haste. I come with overwhelming delight in support of the resolution to rename part of the Lake Street and Florence Street intersection the Ernest W. Jackson Street. Mr. Jackson is a dedicated member of Second of Evanston, where he has held membership for at least over a half a century. Mr. Jackson is also a longtime resident at Florence and Lake Streets. He has been a steady, reassuring, powerful presence in the neighborhood just across from Penny Park. Mr. Jackson has also served as an unofficial fiscal advisor par excellence for countless people in Evanston, particularly African-Americans who have invested in the stock market. He is a resident, homeowner, landlord, church member, and consummate friend to the Evanston community. Mr. Jackson's very presence has brought stability and power in our beloved town of Evanston, raising his family in this town, working, paying taxes, influencing hundreds through personal example, hard work, saving, investing back into the community. There is no question that Ernest Jackson Street will forever remind generations to come that an unassuming, gentle giant left a brazen, blazing trail worth following. And Mr. Jackson is sitting right here to my left. Thank you very much. And now with the 30 seconds remaining, 35, 40, I want to address the FOIA occasion. I have written a letter to the mayor and also to the City Manager and City Clerk and all Members of the City Council, so you know my perspective on this issue. I think it is very unfortunate that all of this has come to pass through the lenses of city residents. There is a significant crevice, it seems to me, between the office of the City Clerk and others in the city, and this is particularly true as it relates to the responsibilities and processes of the FOIA officer. Most of the public would have hoped that a resolution or a path to resolution would have been made prior to a lawsuit being filed. While Clerk Reed and the city appear significantly apart on the issue, I believe that there is perhaps a way out. While the ultimate decision for steps forward seems to lie in the hands of lawyers, I do not believe that this is the wiser path forward. In fact, I believe a simple detour might well allow a healthy exchange of perspectives and a way out of the divisiveness and onto the road of unity. I believe a mediator should be brought in to hear both sides, acquire critical information, and render a suggestion for movement forward. The mediator ought to at least not be associated with either side or be employed, but work and be in relationship with the entire city. The mediator should be given as much information as deemed possible to review the question in hand and hear, for in the final analysis, freedom of information has nothing to do with a single individual or four individuals. It has to do with providing material upon request to those who are probably in struggle and peril. This crossroads where you find yourselves is not about any of you individually, it is about things like freedom, and justice, and equality, and precious access to information. And that, my friends, is pretty much the America that we should all be about. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. All right, Darlene, come on up. Darlene Cannon, Ruth Hudson, then Mary Rosinski.
Good evening. The huge Homeland Security tank that was supposedly used as a physical barrier with a surveillance camera antenna cast a dark shadow on Custer Street Fair. What kind of security did the tank provide that EPD couldn't? There has always been barricades to reroute traffic to the fair. Is there a greater threat to the community that we need to be made aware of? What a great way to intimidate Members of our community. Good job. In regards to the astronomical cost of Robert Crown, that's going to create hardship on all of Evanston residents, except for the 1%, you, our elected officials, should be demanding that the private entities and groups that will be using Robert Crown step up and pay their fair share of construction costs in addition to cost for use. For the tiny amount that Beacon Academy will be paying to use our facility during prime time of 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. daily, we'd be better off giving them their money back. We shouldn't be paying for a private Montessori school to use our facility. The real question here is why aren't you all asking the hard questions about feasibility and accountability? Why is this the job of the taxpayers? I would hope you'd reconsider and reinstate FOIA to Clerk Reed. Again, wanted to address the blatant mistreatment of Clerk Reed by Mayor Hagerty. I'm hopeful that as part of the resolution adopted by City Council, that Mayor Hagerty will also participate in racial equity training, so that going forward, he'll understand that it's not okay to treat Clerk Reed like his boy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Hudson, come on up, Mary Rosinski, and Joan Safford.
Hi, my name is Ruth Hudson. I'm a proud Third Ward South Evanston resident for the past 12 years. I'm a designer, production manager for Piccolo Theater. I'm the Secretary of the Board of Directors of Piccolo Theater, and this year, I was the Assistant Director of Custer Fair. And I want to make abundantly clear Custer Fair's position on the Homeland Security van. Every year, we hire and pay Evanston and police and fire for security for the fair. When we came to the city to request the services again, we were told that we would need to barricade the entrances somehow. This is because there's people driving into crowds of people. We were presented with two options to barricade the gates. The first one was enormous physical blockades at the cost of $1 million, which we did not have, or the vehicles at a lower cost. Of course, we opted for the vehicles. We were then informed that a mobile command center would be one of the vehicles. The van has the ability to see weather, they said. The police and fire can use it, they said. It's great. They said, great, this is fine, we love this. On Saturday morning, when I saw that there was Department of Homeland Security slathered on the side of that van, I knew we would have problems. The statements of DHS is not welcome in the city, I firmly agree with that. If ICE comes into my neighborhood, deep in the apartments of the Third World, they're going to, Third Ward, they're going to find a fight. So I agree with these statements. I just want to make it clear, the statements of Custer Fair chose the van is incorrect. Custer Fair chose municipal vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you for your work putting on the Custer Street Fair. Ms. Rosinski, Joan Safford, then Sarah Shostak.
Hi, Mary Rosinski. I'm here for two things. One is accountability on Robert Crown. I'm still waiting for, hopefully you will ask for, what am I thinking? Oh, God, it's an accounting study that an accountant would do when they're really looking to understand. I'm sorry, what?
Forensic.
Forensic, that's the word, thank you. And the reason is, is that this project is so out of whack with anything. I have to look at about 12 other municipal rinks in this, in the country, and this is by far the most expensive. 2014, right up in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, they built a 91,000-square-foot with two ice rinks of the NHL, with 1,100 people in one, 600 in the other, 100% private-financed, funded, taxpayers didn't get stuck with anything, and it was $7.1 million. Granted, they didn't have the little, they didn't have the running, and they didn't have the library, but $7.1 million is a big difference between that and $54 million. So I think we need that accounting to see what the heck is going on with this. Going to my next question is, I hope that we will table the liquor application. Is it tabled? Hold it, thank you. Because the residents in the Seventh Ward near Northwestern have no real knowledge of this application. And just so we all are clear, we are all residents, neighbors of Northwestern, and that application that they're putting in to turn that area into a commercial and for-profit event really needs to be just taken off. In 1970, we spent seven years fighting a loophole that had been opened by the previous council. We ended up all the way at the Illinois Supreme Court- We ended up all the way at the Illinois Supreme Court, where the Illinois Supreme Court said the city could close that loophole again. It cost us over $1 million then. Please don't open up that door again. It's a nonprofit facility. It is not an entertainment venue. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan, and then Sarah Shawstock, then Michael Bernard.
And I'm going to warn you that Sarah is ill. She and sent me-
Hope she gets better.
Put under my door.
Okay.
So if I may, I will do that also. The agenda item A12 contains two significant pieces of welcome news. First, the staff request that the city council receive and file Resolution 59-R-19 authorizing the city manager to amend the contract for the sale of 1714, 1720 Chicago. The contract expired on June 12th. The contract will become part of the city's historical record, and I would like to express my appreciation to the city council for its recognition of the problems posed by the project and their decision to pull back from going forward with that project. Second, the staff requests direction from city council on potential future development for this property. We hope that the city council members are ready to see this request for guidance as an opportunity for fresh thinking and to approach their responsibility with open eyes, ears, and minds. The opportunity will be most valuable if done with unrushed reflection on the lessons learned from the now rejected project. In considering their responsibility to provide guidance, we hope that the city councilman will recognize the fact that all city-owned property is held in public trust for the Evanston community. That trust requires care, transparency, and full and timely opportunity for community engagement by those community members who will be affected by any sale or changed use. The requirement for the sale of city land requires, as you know, a two-thirds vote and not a simple majority, and that is a mark of the seriousness of a decision with respect to city land. With regard to the library parking lot, what happens next is not just a ward issue. We hope the city council will instruct the staff to plan for and facilitate the highest level of notice and community participation. Alderman Win recently provided an example with her town meeting on the possible development along Chicago Avenue on the Oscar's Berry and-
Joan, I need to, I need to wrap up.
I'm going to finish up. Those affected include not only the immediate residential neighborhood neighbors, the business neighbors and representatives of the neighboring historic and landmark districts, but also the broader community from all parts of the city who use the library and businesses. The city council should never again commit to how the parking lot will be developed before assuring such community engagement. It should never again appear to commit to a rezoning before the required notice has been given and the required hearing held. As you move forward, there are so many qualified and capable people in this city who are prepared to assist in this process.
Thank you, Joan. And why don't you bring up what we'll do with Sarah's? We'll go ahead and just file that. Sarah's spoken many times. We know she's not, we know she's not, we know she's not supportive, and I just need to keep things-
Well, I could have had somebody else do it, and then you would never have-
Keep things going. No, even, even somebody else, because we have a rule that you have to be, be here to give public comment. But we'll file it, and we know, we certainly know Sarah Shawstock's position on the library parking lot. Just bring it on up. You can give it to the clerk. He'll file it with the record.
I'm sure he will file it for the record. I hope that he will file it and that you all-
He'll file, he'll file it, and we-
And that you all will consider it.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Michael Bernard, are you here, Michael? We've got Michael Bernard, Doreen Price.
I'm going to speak for Michael Bernard.
Okay, all right. Just give us your name.
Sure. My name is Catherine Jackson Bradley. I'm an Evanstonian, and I'm here for my father, Ernest W. Jackson. Dad, wave your hand. We're going to speak to the resolution. It was my son's idea. He was out cutting the grass, and he said, it took him two hours to cut the grass. And I said, why? And he said, because everyone was coming up to him and saying, who are you and where is Mr. Jackson? Dad is on the properties at 1604 Lake and 1428 Florence for 55 years. And he came, he migrated here from his family farm in Elk Mountain, Alabama. There were many family and life changes that could have brought, took him back to that farm that's still there. But because of the Evanston community and his neighbors, he has stayed. He was part of the original community men to build the Penny Park. And he, if you know Dad, if you ever pass the corner, he is typically in the yard. He is typically in the yard tending to his lawn or sitting in his driveway watching over Penny Park and the neighbors. And even now, to this day, at his 96 years, Dad, he still walks the community, taking canvas of the community. And so, we want this to be a living legacy for him. He can tell you all the changes. I can tell you about going to Dewey School and how I didn't have to be bused because of the perfect racial balance during that time. He can tell you more about the cobblestone roads that we had, and he can tell you more about what it takes to live in Evanston way beyond your retirement years. We're talking 30-plus more years of retirement that he's had where he has stayed in that community. They tell us, and Michael Bernard tells us, that they still see Dad outside. When he's outside, the neighbors don't close their blinds. They call each other, and they say, Mr. Jackson is there. And they stand watch till he goes in. And because of neighbors like that, because of the high walk score we have in Evanston using the Evanston sidewalks, he can tell you who his neighbors are. On my street, I maybe know four names, and I waved to everybody else. He can tell you who everyone is, what their occupation is, and what they're doing for their children. And yes, for stock advice and saving, he can tell you too, be humble and don't spend your money on travel.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your support of this resolution.
Thank you, Catherine. I want to, I want to give an aldermatic privilege moment for Alderman Braithwaite at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a point of information, because I know that people who are here to support him. So, the family selected July 20th. It's a Saturday at 2:00 p.m. for the street naming. So Pastor Neighbors, if you wouldn't mind adding that to your church announcement, we would appreciate it, and you can coordinate everything through the daughter. So, congratulations in advance, and I'm sure that this will pass. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You know what I'd like to do is, I'd like to move something out of order right now on this, on this item, okay? So, is there, help me find the item number here on the agenda, and then we'll go back to public comment.
Oh, one.
This is item oh one, Alderman Braithwaite. Could you read this item into?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move item oh one, Resolution 46-R-19, designating the portion of Florence between Lake Avenue and Greenwood with the honorary street name of Ernest W. Jackson Way.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So if you were here for Ernest Jackson Way, and that was the only thing you were here for, don't feel obligated to stay, but if you want to stay for the rest of public comment and our exciting meeting, you're, you're welcome to. But we moved that up just to, to help people. We're now back to, to public comment. Doreen, if you want to come up, we've got Doreen Price, then Ray Friedman, then Bennett Johnson.
Do we need a little pause here?
I think the best thing about Evanston is seeing people like this being honored. And there's so many more seniors in the community, your community, our community, that will be honored, hopefully, as we go along this year as well. It's just very motivating for the rest of us who see that if we have 30 more years to live, that that's actually a lifetime in a way, if we can make it to his age. So, with that, I'm opening up with three things. One is covered by two letters I sent, sent to the council or the city clerk, and then covering issues that actually may give you a different view of looking at funding because of a problem that occurred, and I heard it from two different sources, one from the U.K. and one from the U.S. It has to do with well-being as a, as a endpoint instead of the usual endpoints that are used for looking at philanthropy, which affects us in terms of funding or in terms of prioritizing our budget. The second thing is regard to climate resiliency, all involving equity empowerment, because you have a new person on board who's also involved in schooling, and it was at Equity Empowerment meeting that climate resilience was considered and brought up by the Environmental Justice Group, and Kummer had left the room at that point. A reminder that they recommended that there's a real need to not just look at some of these industrial type, they didn't use the word industrial, but I'll use it just to summarize it more, extensive external infrastructure sort of thing versus preservation of small homes which are adversely affected, there's a paper I presented here, adversely affected by income, income inequality. So smaller homes don't get fixed, and they need to be preserved so they don't have to, they can weather disasters.
Thank you, Doreen.
And the third thing is the FOIA, okay, I'll make it quick. The FOIA, in terms of having a city clerk, we need outside investigation, and I find a, I find a pattern, and a pattern is alarming, and a pattern has to do with the CN, CMP board and the ethics board, and I happened to review both on the same day because I was planning to go to one and I read about the other. So, I found that there was common complaints or issues, let's put it this way, and positive, and they both involve the same sort of thing where the city council would be the, I don't know the adjudication stuff, but the city council would be the last, if you did an appeals, you would end up with the city council. Well, the problem is with a member of city council, it's not really an external, external board. So the city has to be independent of these boards. They need to have city clerk looking over all the FOIAs. If the city wants to remain in terms of transparency and trust and the things that you can accomplish, which I hope you read what I wrote.
Thank you, Doreen.
You need to, you need to do this and get the respect of the community so we can build more. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Friedman, Bennett Johnson, Carla Sutton.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, city council, city clerk, city manager. I had like six items I want to talk about, but I narrowed it down to two. So, I wanted to talk about the TIF fund and why we're bonding out the TIF fund and why it just seems like an astronomical amount of money to be taking. Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now? Mm-hmm. I wanted to talk about TIF fund and why we're taking money out of the bonds to pay for a TIF fund, and there's just an astronomical amount of money going from our bonds to the TIF funds, which winds up costing us twice as much money as we took out to begin with. So, last thing I want to talk about is, last week, we intended, several of us attended a housing and homelessness meeting. The committee, that committee approved 210,000 for the Howe project, which I talked about a few times before. The purpose for this payoff is to allow Howe to prioritize four units for Evanston residents. Now, as you all know, we've had a few issues with this Howe project, starting with your refusal to hear our appeal based on Code 6-3-11, which is still a valid appeal. Now, you gave a zoning approval for the 16 units of inclusionary housing for this building, which it was never intended to be. It was proposed as 16 units of permanent supportive housing, which is very different guidelines than inclusionary housing. We asked Sarah Flax last week why this Howe project was not properly zoned. Sarah Flax told us the city does not have a classification for permanent supportive housing. Why not? After spending all the time and effort to change and rearrange the inclusionary housing ordinance again and again for several years now, 20 pages alone for today, but still no classification for permanent supportive housing. Why is this?
Ray, I need to wrap it up here.
Okay. So, to wrap it up, please review the certificate of zoning compliance for this Howe project. Please review 6-3-2, which states in part, "No land shall be proposed to be occupied or used in whole, in whole or in part for any purpose whatsoever until the zoning administrator has issued a certificate of zoning compliance stating that the building and use comply with the provision of the ordinance."
Thank you, Ray.
The proposed use is stated, it's just, inclusionary housing is not permanent supportive housing, so it needs to be zoned as such.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, Carla Sutton, and then James Engelmann.
Mayor Hagerty, city clerk, members of council, city manager, and citizens. I can't compete with Reverend Neighbors as far as eloquence, so I decided to give you some good ideas. President Truman had a good idea in 1950s when he integrated the military, but Chris W. Attick was the first man to die for this country, and Prince Holf had a black unit at Bunker Hill. Branch Rickey had a good idea when he integrated baseball with Jackie Robinson in 1947. But in the 1880s, Hunter Fleetwood Walker and his brothers were playing major league Abe Sapstein had a good idea as far as basketball with the Harlem Globetrotters. And if you notice the number of people on the court today, we realize that things have changed. In aviation, Betsy Coleman was the first woman in the United States to get a pilot's license, and Eleanor Roosevelt was responsible for creating or deciding, helping to create the Tuskegee Airmen. Robert Crown doesn't have MBEs and MBEs and WBEs. It'd be a good idea for the city council to look closely at that and make sure that the money that's generated, the millions of dollars, comes back to the city of Evanston. And it'd also be a good idea if the city council again demanded that the new facility be revenue-independent. And I want to finish with a very bad idea, which is to build a new city hall. It's a good idea to do a safety check of the whole city to find out where the problems are rather than focus on one area and say that's the main problem. There are problems with safety all over the city, and that's where the research should be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Sutton, Carla Sutton, James Engelmann, then Tiara X. Foster Lloyd.
Good evening. Mayor Hagerty, City Clerk Reed, Alderman and City Manager, Carla Sutton, Fifth Ward. First and foremost, I want to thank you for the designation of Mr. Jackson Way, and I do appreciate that. Secondly, I would like to make a couple of comments on APP 1. I want to commend the appointment of Mr. Steve Lamo Jordan to the Commission of Public Safety, and I think that's a very good selection. However, I am opposed to the selection of Ms. Nozari for these particular reasons on the Committee for Housing Homelessness Commission. She has not been accessible for community input. She has marginalized and ignored the concerns of the residents regarding the property at 1305 Pittner, 2215 Demstert. There's still a concern that the building was put there for inclusionary housing, but yet the stated purpose is permanent supportive housing. And I don't understand why we have zoning rules that can't be enforced. Either you enforce what you said, the zoning is there for, or don't enforce. And secondly, I want to commend Mrs. Alderman Simmons for bringing in Dearborn people. Every retired and elderly person in the community alliance was denied appeals for property. So we do need some kind of support for the elderly and housing in our community, and I thank you and will continue to support you in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. James, come on up, James, and then Tiara X. Foster Lloyd, and then Ally Harner, and Carl Klein.
Hello. My name's James Engelmann, and I want to talk about the Elgin, before you guys have a meeting about it, I think you guys should, for the handicap, disabled people, before you have, put the noses, not in the mailboxes, because they don't, they don't read sometimes, just hand it to them, and then put it on the computer, because, and then if there's a day that the bus will go, it takes a day, you have to schedule a bus a day before the event, okay? day before the event, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. All right, Tiara X. Foster Lloyd, Ally Harne, and then Carl Klein.
Greetings, neighbors. My name is Tara X. Foster Lloyd. I was born, raised, and still reside in Evanston, which is quite unbelievable, actually, being that people of color, black families especially, are being pushed and priced out of Evanston every day. Talk about unwanted. Ironically, though, Evanstonians love to take pride in its diversity. However, during the last meeting, I heard something of substance, which was that many of the black families here in Evanston, mine included, moved here from Abbeville, South Carolina, losing acreage, gaining acreage, only to have our land, homes, and lives stolen yet again. So again, next generation, this generation, where are we to live now? Where people are mostly concerned with laughing and having fun climbing huge walls while the rest of us can barely keep four little walls and a roof over our children's heads? What is this? White privilege and white supremacy as usual? And if you really want to end it, white supremacy, oppression, then quote, "Stop patting yourselves on the backs for voting on it. Stop complaining and do something." I humbly suggest to any and all of us, get the scroll either from me or one of my sisters. Read it, learn from it, act on it. This is not an advertisement, this is 70 seconds of solution. Peace.
Thank you. Ally Harne, Carl Klein, and Kira Kelly.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ally Harne from the Second Ward. Oh, I just did something there. Okay. I'm a signer and supporter of Alejandro's petition, and I hope to never see any type of DHS truck in our welcoming city again. Secondly, Fitz and I are neighbors with Mr. Jackson, and we are so pleased that the street we walk on or drive on daily will be named after him in his honor. He was one of the first people we met, and we could tell right away he was special. I'm also here to speak in opposition to the deal that is currently in the works with Beacon Academy, making for exclusive use of Robert Crown, giving them the gym from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday when their sports teams are in session, August 1st to March 10th every year. My son, Fitz, has been a Robert Crown kid for four years now, since he was two, and it is a home away from home. We love Robert Crown, and we have the utmost respect and adoration for the staff and teachers there. Fitz goes to camp there right now, and then during the school year, he goes to the after school program where his favorite part of the day is playing in the gym at Robert Crown. He admitted to me once that he daydreams during the day about playing kickball at Robert Crown. They have a great kickball match every night. Now, I recognize that he's a boy with a lot of privilege, but he's also the child of a single full-time working mom and a single full-time working dad, and we rely on Robert Crown to tire him out, so that when we pick him up at 6:00 p.m. at his request, because he's played in the gym and he doesn't want to like go home earlier than 6 o'clock, we rely on that. We also feel less guilty about working long hours because we know he's had a really awesome afternoon. I am also one of many parents at Robert Crown who are very concerned about these changes for the after-school schedule, and we are requesting a meeting with the city staff so that our concerns can be heard. We should be given equal time to any hockey parents or skating parents, we are all stakeholders in Robert Crown. And Fitz is one of thousands of Evanston kids whose access to the new Robert Crown should be prioritized.
Thank you, Ally.
I know you've received a lot of emails from people. I just want to read one paragraph from another parent at Robert Crown, Mara Yantarans, and she said, "I believe that we have been presented with a tremendous opportunity. I believe that we can and indeed must take another look at this agreement through the lens of racial and economic equity. It will be difficult, uncomfortable, and perhaps result in an imperfect solution, but it is imperative that we try. There are many factors to balance, including financial concerns, but we must place racial and economic equity at the core of our decision-making, for if we are truly building Evanston's next crown jewel, we also must endeavor to build an equitable community that supports our jewels, Evanston's children and youth."
Thank you, Ally. All right. We're not doing a very good job tonight, you guys, staying on this minute 30, and if I give you, if I give you a heads up, I need you to wrap it up, I need you to wrap it up, or we'll be here all night. And again, we try to keep to this 45 minutes, so Carl is always good at getting his in on time, so welcome, Carl, and then we've got Kira Kelly, then Betty Esther.
Good evening. Item A12 regarding the library parking lot should be a housekeeping issue since the contract officially expired June 12th. The description in the packet located on page 135 reads, quote, "Staff recommends that it be directed to send a formal notice to the purchaser that the transaction is terminated", unquote. It goes on to say, quote, "Staff seeks direction from city council on potential future development efforts for this property," unquote. It is important for the city council to hear what the public wants to have happen with the library parking lot. It should be cleared to the members of city council that our input is vital for the success of any plans for that city-owned property. This is not limited to the First Ward, but to all Evanstonians. I believe there should be a public meeting chaired by someone other than the current Alderman of the First Ward, who has ignored her own constituents over the past three-plus years regarding this site. Guidance from the public should be the first step in reconsidering the use of the library parking lot. This should take the form of a public meeting chaired by city staff, perhaps Johanna Leonard. Alderman, when, as a member of the Planning and Development Committee, whose duties and responsibilities include to review and advise the city council on the use and planning of all city land, I encourage you to show some leadership and help organize a community meeting similar to the one you organized with Otto Barn and Oscar Isberian rugs. Ten more seconds. An outgrowth of the public meeting should be a special panel comprised of community members with special knowledge of urban planning, zoning, the downtown plan, site characteristics, including those of its historic neighbors, Evanston Public Library needs, along with city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Kira Kelly, Betty Esther, and then Heather Sweeney.
Hi, Kira Kelly, First Ward. Seeing that staff was asking council for direction on the library parking lot tonight, I came here to ask that we begin a new, inspiring chapter for this situation and put a three-year epic development battle behind us. Please take the lead of Alderman Wynn and Alderman Rue Simmons, move forward in a positive and productive way regarding city development, especially as this is a taxpayer-owned parcel. Bring the city, residents, and especially stakeholders together to discuss potentially collaborative and exciting ideas. But instead, I come here with a sense of a not-again feeling, as I just read the following from, reported by Evanston Now about the library parking lot, and I quote, "It appears the Alderman tonight of a range of options that include, quote, 'reviving and extending the development agreement.' But how can we revive and extend this contract? The library parking lot contract expired on June 12th at 5:00 p.m., and since that time, city staff has confirmed numerous times with key stakeholders that this contract had indeed expired. Additionally, Alderman Fitz confirmed this publicly to the Plan Commission last week. In fact, the confirmation made many people try to feel less uneasy about an erroneous date of June 30th instead of June 12th, used in city materials even tonight, and being told it was simply an error. Why is this significant? A June 30th expiration would mean a vote could still happen tonight, but again, we are assured this was impossible. But here we are, possibly reviving and extending the contract that residents were promised expired and a vote reassured wouldn't happen. Stakeholders involved in hundreds of meetings for years aren't even here, thinking that this time maybe they didn't have to cancel summer vacations and plans. I hope we don't move on like this. Please move on with respect for the people in the process and don't let us feel pessimistic once again.
Thank you.
Let's ensure people feel the rules, process, and now contracts are being followed. Instead, lead us to an optimistic collaborative day in Evanston.
I need you to wrap it up, Kira.
Let your taxpayers and your representatives work with you on this potentially exciting project.
Thank you. Ms. Esther, Heather Sweeney, Trish Conley.
Excuse me. I'm here to speak on the appointment for the Housing and Homeless Commission. I'm in favor of the two young ladies that are pointing, being appointed, but I want to speak to a reminder to them and all the people that's sitting on the committee. One of them is working with a organization that the people at the 1300 block of Pittner came and taught. They only heard one conversation coming out of their mouth. They heard the issue, oh, you are against affordable housing, which they wasn't. The theme was, they did not listen to the complete conversation of those people. If they had, we might not have been here, because then they would have understood that it dealt with the fair housing issue in the terms of how the zoning was applied. The zoning was applied inappropriate, is still standing inappropriate. But now, they are back to ask for money, where they have to get, wait for HUD, and I guess also the state, to decide whether they will give them permission for four families to be able to move. They are residents of Evanston, but they only from a select group, understand that, a select group, from either the high school or District 65. So we still have in preference, that project, if you're going to allow, should be there for the supported permanent housing like it is supposed to be built for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. Heather Sweeney, Trish Conley, then Eva Switchit.
Hi, I'm Heather Sweeney. I live in the Fourth Ward, and I wanted to speak about the DHS truck that is not welcome in Evanston. Alejandro spoke about the petition and that there were 500 signatures, and I wanted to read a few of the comments that were part of those, part of the petition. Evanston is a welcoming city that needs to go above and beyond to not put fear in the hearts of any members of our community. Another person said, "I'm appalled at this. Regardless of how our city officials view this truck's purpose, it is a symbol of terror and intimidation to many in our community." Another person said, "Most Evanston community members are dedicated to protecting all of our neighbors, and this includes shielding our most vulnerable from anything that will invoke fear and mistrust. This van and its symbol represents a threat to immigrants in this current political environment. This van does not represent safety. This vehicle represents discrimination and terror to so many individuals and communities, especially in light of recent actions and threats by the current administration. Please rely on any other resources available to protect Evanston residents at community This was a flagrant disregard for the citizens of Evanston. I do not want this lack of communication, lack of consideration for the constituency of the city, and the lack of understanding of the ramifications of the presence of a clear aggression against people of color, and a total lack of regard for humanity." And really quickly, I'll read the one last one, that time went really fast. "The ominous presence of this vehicle is not welcome in this city. Regardless of the original intent of the choice to use this vehicle, the reality in today's landscape is that this vehicle terrorizes members of this community. The result of its presence at the Custer Fair was for people to choose not to attend. This hurt the fair organizers and the small business owners who invested money and time in the event. A welcoming city is failing if we do not protect our immigrant community members, both physically and psychologically." Thank you.
Thank you. I have Trish Conley, then I have Eva Clarence, and Sergio, if he wants to come, he missed earlier. Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Tricia Conley, Fourth Ward. I just would echo the remarks made tonight about the DHS truck. It really doesn't bode well for Evanston as a welcoming city. Additionally, some of the other things that don't bode well, that don't make us a very welcoming place for the residents as well as people visiting, are the continual plea by residents to get the financial reports and user agreements regarding Robert Crown. And this is, you know, the barrier continues based on this situation with Clerk Reed and the lack of access to FOIA documents. That is unacceptable, and I hope we have people here tonight who are representing us who are going to start to take a stand on this, because it's getting really old, us coming out trying to get some traction here on this issue. "The community wonders why private entities such as Beacon Academy would trump the community on access to the gym during peak times. That seems to make not a lot of sense." And then lastly, my own personal story about parking in Evanston. I know you've heard lots of stories about parking. Yesterday, I pulled up into a parking space on Benson and reminded myself that, oh, yeah, on Sunday afternoons, I got to pay the meter. Okay, fine. So I pulled in, and I noticed a parking attendant who was ticketing people to cars north of me, and I thought, well, they've obviously seen me, I just pulled in. I walked right past them, went to the meter box about five cars north and proceeded to pay, and somebody else was there putting, you know, their life worth of change in there so they'd have enough time. And by the time I paid, I walked back by my car, thankfully, and I had a ticket. So, you know, this is an issue. We want to be a welcoming city. This is not the way to do it. There was a big event downtown, we probably had some people who don't even live here, don't even know that we have parking meters on Sunday, and certainly any of those posted signs, that doesn't tell you we have parking that you got to pay for on Sundays, it just says Park Evanston. So, you know, we can, we can do this, we can still get income, but we're not going to get people here if this is what we're doing. Thank you for your time.
Eva, do we have Eva Switchit? Is there Eva Switchit? Okay, how about Clarence Weaver? I think Clarence left, they may have been here for Mr. Jackson. Sergio, you will be our last speaker tonight, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, City Clerk. My name is Sergio Hernandez. I am a school board member and chair of the Policy Committee at Evanston Skokie School, District 65. First, as a member of the Evanston Welcoming Committee, I would like to register my support for the petition's demands and ensure our city doesn't use any vehicles associated with DHS. I would like to thank my neighbor, Cicely Fleming, who reached out to the Welcoming Committee, Evanston Religious Leaders, and her city colleagues, informed herself and pushed our city to remind our Evanston Ninth Ward immigrant community that they are safe in Evanston in response to Trump's regimes, Trump regime's threats to immigrant and refugee families over the weekend, so thank you. I wanted also to come in today, since I have a day off from my school board meetings, to thank you for passing the resolution on equity, and I'm looking forward for our institution, District 65, as well as ETHS, to continue this work. And again, I'm extending, on behalf of the board, our experience with equity work, which again is very tough to implement. You know, again, we've done some incredible things regarding, you know, giving students for marginalized communities access to high-quality education, you know, and staffing that reflects, and curriculum that reflects their culture and language. But again, we are still lacking pieces, and we acknowledge that. So we need help. There's things that we can help to a certain extent, but our families need affordable housing, they need, again, you know, job training, they need, again, access to resources that are needed for them to, for families to thrive in order for children to thrive in our schools. So I'm looking forward to the work coming up next year that we'll do together.
Thank you. Excellent. It was good to have your son up there too, Sergio. Well, thank you, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming up and speaking so passionately and eloquently about a variety of issues here in our town. We're now going to move on to the agenda this evening. Alderman Braithwaite, if you would take us, your APW, Alderman Braithwaite, he's coming, he's coming in. He now is, has Administration and Public Works, correct? Okay. So I'm going to ask, when you get up here, if you'll take us through M1, the minutes, and then through APW, please.
So, item M1 is the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting, June 10th, 2019. That's for action. Can I just go through the rest of the, or do you want to vote on that separately?
No, go through it all. We'll include that.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'd like to move item A1, which is the payroll between May 27th through June 19th, in dollar amount of $2,841, $401.11. That's for action. Item A2 is the bills list through June 25th, in the dollar amount of $2,831,922.69. That's also for action.
$992, or did that change in committee? I got $992.69?
What did I say?
I had $922.
Oh, my mistake. So $2,831,992.69. Thank you for the correction. Item A3 is the agreement with Sam Goss and Associates to provide services for a handyman program. We made some corrections. We made some corrections to the, or we voted on edits to remove the word consultant to contractor. Item A4 is the agreement with Azar Audit Solutions, Inc., for the sales of the utility tax revenue audits. Item A5 is the contract award with Spring City Electrical Manufacturing, excuse me, that was, Item A5 was held in committee till our next meeting.
Okay.
Item A6 is the sole source renewal of Dell Pro Support, in the dollar amount of 100, hold on a second, let me get that right. Current, is 137?
27,000, 598?
Oh, 27, that's, that's what I was looking for. In the dollar amount of 27,598.12. Resolution 61R-19 is updating the investment policy. And then Item A8 is Resolution 62-R19, approving the settlement of Lindstrom versus the City of Evanston. Item A9 is Resolution 63R-19, approving the settlement of RJ O'Neal, Inc., versus the City of Evanston et al. Item A10 is Ordinance 62-19, amending the portions of the city code to institute the building permit cancellation fee schedule. And that's for an induction. Item A11 is Ordinance 61-0-19, amending portions of the city code regarding the City of Evanston's occupation of the public way permit fee schedule. You'd like to move Item A11 or A12? Okay. Item A12 has been removed at the request of Alderman Fisk. Ordinance A13, excuse me, A13 is Ordinance 51-0-19.
Did you do, I'm sorry, did I miss, did you hit, you hit A11?
Alderman Fisk asked to...
That's A12?
And A13? Alderman Revel? Okay.
I'm sorry, A13's off the event?
A12 and A13.
I'm sorry, off the consent, right?
Off the consent.
Okay.
I'd like to move Item A14, Ordinance 56-0-19, approval to amend the city code section 3-4-6, creating a new liquor P5 liquor license. This isn't the new one, no. I'd also like to move Item A15, which is Ordinance 57-0-19, that's approval to amend the city code section 3-4-6, by amending the Class J and P-2 liquor licenses.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Rue Simmons, can you take us through planning and development?
P1, Ordinance 64... Sorry. P1, Ordinance 64019, major zoning relief for curb cut in driveway to the street at 2650 Sheridan Road, variation in the R1 district. P2, Ordinance 54019, amending various parts of Title VI zoning of the Evanston city code to confirm, conform with the City of Evanston Inclusionary Housing Ordinance zoning text amendment. P3 is removed.
Meaning it's off of this agenda?
I'm sorry, it's...
It's off, so we'll talk about it, okay.
Yeah, off consent. And then PD1, oh, well, that's for a discussion.
That was held in committee?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Alderman Fisk, can you take us through Human Services Committee and appointments?
O1 is Resolution 46R19, designating the portion of Florence Avenue between Lake Street and Greenwood Street with the honorary street name sign, Ernest W. Jackson Way. That's for action.
And so my fault on that, Alderman. So we, we took a break from public comment, and we all voted on that, so that doesn't even need to be on the consent agenda.
Okay. Do you want me to do appointments?
If you would do appointments, I'd be glad.
Sure. APP1 is Affordable Housing Plans Steering Committee, Karina... Please tell me how to pronounce that.
Buckler?
Okay. Then the Affordable Housing Plans Steering Committee, Stephanie Urbaning, Arts Council, James Deeb, Environment Board, Carolyn Pyer, and Environment Board, Michelle Redfield, and the Equity and Empowerment Commission, Max Weinberg. Housing and Homelessness Commission, Kathy Feingold. Housing and Homelessness Commission, Nita Nazari. Public Safety Civil Service Commission, Steve Lemieux-Jordan. Public Safety Civil Service Commission, Diane Petersmark. And Public Safety Civil Service Commission, Fred Tannenbaum. And reappointment to the Firefighters Pension Board, Alex Granjelik. And the Library Board, Adam Goodman, and those are for action.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you take, please take the role on the consent agenda?
Alderman, Alderman Suffolk, Alderman Revel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wen, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're now gonna move to the items taken off the agenda. Again, A5, the Talmish Lights, that one was held, so Alderman Braithwaite, if you could take us through to A12, and then A13.
As Mr. Mayor, Member of Council, I'd like to move Item A12, Resolution 59-R-19, which amends amendment to purchase and sale agreement for the city-owned real estate property located at 1714-20 Chicago Avenue to Chicago Avenue's Partners LLC.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, you can't second?
Second.
Sorry about that.
Is there a second? Who seconded? All right, Alderman Fisk seconded. All right, we've got a couple lights, Alderman Fisk, then Alderman Wen.
Yes. Could I just have some direction from Corporation Council about what, what we're doing tonight? We are authorizing the return of the, so, the earnest money, which is $50,000?
What is before you, we're just trying to close the loop. So, at the last meeting, this item was held, and effectively, the zoning period for the contract has expired, and so we were just trying to, for full transparency, this contract should be terminated. Please direct staff to send the notice of termination, because that triggers the title company that hosts the earnest money to release it to the buyer. So that's it. That's what, we're just seeking direction from the Council to send the termination and terminate the contract.
Okay, so what I would recommend is that we terminate the contract and return the earnest money?
Yes, that's what we need.
I would move that.
Second.
Okay. And can we have a vote on that, and then I want to speak further to the issue?
Okay, so there was a, there was a second on that. Yeah, we can, and this is to return the earnest money. Do we need to have a, and terminate, and terminate the contract? Do we need to have a roll call vote on that?
No.
You can just voice vote.
Okay, all in favor of terminating the contract and returning the money?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So during the, during the period that we have been having a conversation about this particular development, there's been other interest in the property that's been expressed, and my recommendation to the Council is that we, that we support or authorize a 30-day period to solicit letters of intent from those persons interested in developing the property. And, Mr. City Manager, could I have just some explanation of the interest that's been expressed?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Alderman Fisk, we've had some anecdotal interest. We did receive late Friday, a written offer from a developer for the property. So that is the first written offer that I have received.
So what, what I would like to do is, while there is interest in the property, and everyone who has spoken at this, before this council, whether they be citizens or members of the council, have all come to the conclusion that something, something is likely to happen on this property. And I think it is incumbent on this council to find out what interest does exist out there, and whether or not that's something that the council wishes to pursue. So I'm going to make a motion that we, that we authorize a direct staff to send out a letter of interest with a 30-day period. I'm not sure, quite sure, Mr. City Manager, how to word this, so you can help me with it, but, so that we know what other interest is out there from qualified developers. Could I have a second on that, please?
Could I ask a question?
I think you mean a request for proposal?
Well, we'll let, I guess, the City Manager figure that out, but I have, Alderman Fisk, I've got, I know you're asking, I've got a few other lights of people that wanted to contribute to the conversation.
I'll second for, for conversation or for discussion?
On this item?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're on this item before we go to the other items. Right? Alderman Wen?
Yes. Well, I, I think if we're, I'm not sure what that is, what Alderman Fisk is requesting, but I, I don't think 30 days is sufficient time to find out what interest there is out there in the community, and I think this sounds like a request for proposal, which is something that we would have to debate and discuss again here at the city council as to what would be, what we are interested in doing at that site. So I can't support the motion at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Wen. Alderman Revel?
Well, I think we learned in the last three years that this is a really complicated piece of property, to really figure out what is the best development, and so before we move ahead with some kind of RFP, I would like, I'd like some expert input as to what, what shape, what bulk, size, height, building would actually be appropriate and compatible with its historic neighbors on the north and the south. And then, secondly, what kinds of uses does the community want? Because I think there was a lot of community concern about, you know, desire to have their voices heard. So I would like us to take some time to get some of this design input from experts about what would be really a compatible shape, building there, and then, secondly, a way to have some input from the community.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Revel. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, I think this is important for us to recognize that there are other people who've been following this closely, who are interested in the property, and who are, are apparently qualified to buy and develop it. It would start the process over again. If that doesn't work out, we can go out for another RFP if we want to. I feel, we have heard from a number of people about this, and I think we've taken some extraordinary measures to meet with both adjacent property owners to try to find creative, a creative approach to developing this parcel. The process that we have is a real specific public process, and I think that that will definitely be repeated and will play out, but I think we need to look at who else is out there right now, and who has expressed interest, who has contacted our staff and said, "If anything happens with this project, contact us, we'd be interested in participating." And I think without that information, we're just resetting and starting over again. I'm not sure that designing this building from what would be compatible is, I don't know how that comports with zoning. There is zoning on that site right now. Someone could come in and offer to purchase the property and build an 85-foot-tall building with four floors of parking, which is roughly what the developer that we, that is now expired, was asking to do. So I, I don't know, unless you want to amend the zoning ordinance to only allow a building that, of a certain height, and spots on that property are one, or something. That doesn't make any sense to me. So what I would like to know, is I would like to know who else is out there, what they're offering to pay for that lot, and what they're interested in building, whether it's an office building, or a apartment building, or a condo building. I would just like to have that information of who's out there, because right now, we don't know, other than the one, the one letter of interest that we received today. I've heard of at least two other developers who are also interested, and possibly a third. So I would just like to have that information. I think we can gather that in 30 days.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I appreciate the idea that we don't want to preclude ideas, maybe that there might be something that we haven't thought of that might be a great idea, but, you know, I hesitate to take this step without having this kind of independently put on an agenda. I just feel like, well, first of all, I don't think we can actually vote to do one thing or another tonight, because it's not on the agenda. But even more broadly than that, my understanding is this unsolicited offer was for an apartment building. And I don't know what everybody else thinks, but, you know, my inclination was that if it's gonna be something, you know, an appropriately-sized office building is what made sense. So, so that said, I think we have to independently put it on an agenda. So if we're gonna kind of talk about it, so I'd rather just have that than, than get too deep into it tonight, because I feel like, you know, people are not generally aware that we're gonna be talking about, you know, taking steps and further into it, so I don't want to, I don't want to preclude people from the conversation, or preclude people from having the opportunity to hear what we're gonna say about it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wen?
Well, I mean, I agree with Alderman Wilson, that we really can't vote on that tonight, but I also think that if we simply ask for interest, they, I think, will get all kinds of different things that actually we won't be able to compare with each other very well, because some people will be bidding something, assuming that we're giving up the parking lot, or other people will bid something else, thinking that we need them to, we're requiring the parking. So unless we put some parameters around it, I think we'll get apples, oranges, bananas, we're gonna get a lot of different things that we really can't effectively compare to each other. So I think it's definitely a good idea to, to take a fresh look at this, but I, I think we need to put some thought into what it is we're gonna ask for.
Thank you, Alderman Wen. Alderman Revel?
Just one last point. I mean, we, we did hear a lot from the community for three years, but what we mostly heard was what people didn't want, and I don't think we've really heard yet, in a constructive way, what people do want.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna thank Alderman Wilson for his feedback, and ask if you'd be willing to make a referral so we can start the process. So I'm not sure if that should go to P and D.
I think, I got the sense that Alderman Fisk was actually kind of, in a roundabout way, asking for the referral. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'd rather she make it, because it's, I'm not all that excited about chasing down the building, so.
There you go. All right, well, let me, let me go to Alderman Rainey, and then Alderman Fisk.
I was going to ask Alderman Fisk to make a referral.
There we go.
Because that's, that's all you have to do, so that we can stop this discussion.
Somebody make it.
And move on to the next item that's been taken off the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And then the next meeting, we can have it on the agenda. Are you calling on me, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. I move that this go on the agenda of the next city council meeting, that we give direction for a 30-day request for letters of interest from parties interested in developing and purchasing the library parking lot.
So maybe just a referral at the call of words? I mean, just kind of make...
Well, I'm doing it now. I'm, I'm doing, I'm...
A referral as opposed to a motion? Because I don't think we can vote on a motion.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I defer to our Corporation Council.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table, and I will, I will remove that motion. It was, it was moved and seconded, so we'll, we'll do that. So I am, I'm requesting that this appear on the agenda for the next city council meeting.
It's a special order of business. It's a special order.
A special order of business. Alderman Rainey, am I messing this up?
No, you're, you're doing it right.
Okay. Can you repeat what it is you're asking? Because I'm here and I'm confused. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm asking that we authorize staff to send out a request for letters of interest in any, from anyone interested in purchasing and developing the library parking lot. So, can I, you can't do that. Referral to the...
To discuss the RFP.
So can I just say? No, it's not an RFP. Yeah, but it, it sounds very close.
Yeah, but it sounds very close to an RFP. And I, and I guess I don't get a chance to vote, but just for clarity's sake, I think it's different for you to say, you've heard that there's people who are interested, and the city manager can put together a list to go on the next packet of people who have voiced interest, versus saying, "Go out and see who's interested." Because go out and see who's interested is, in my mind, a different process. I don't even know where he goes out to, and if we don't have parameters, I mean, it's a little slippery slope for me. This sounds more like an RFP-ish kind of thing, versus, "Hey, Mr. City Manager, who has emailed us over the last three years who might be interested? Put that on a piece of paper and in the agenda."
And Alderman can make any referral to any standing committee that they want. You made a referral to the?
I'm not telling you she can, I'm saying it sounds confusing. That's what I'm saying.
We all make confusing ones. Let her make it, and let's move on. Corporation Council, could you help me? I'm looking for staff to go out and find, solicit letters of interest from those people who have expressed interest in developing and purchasing the library parking lot. How do I word that?
What I'm hearing is that you would like staff to bring back to the council on the eighth draft parameters and guidelines for what I think it sounds like is a request for proposals, perhaps with a shorter deadline, but it does sound like that is the request.
Okay.
Am I, Wally?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alderman Fisk, I think there are some distinctions here I think we need to make. First of all, there is something called a request for interest.
Okay.
So I believe that's what I'm hearing Alderman Fisk saying. This is not a full-broom proposal, but just that we'd have a period of time for anyone who's interested in discussing further purchase of the land, that they'd make themselves known.
Yes.
And so what a referral could be is that we could come back with a draft document requesting that with a timeframe attached. My only request for the timeframe is that we are on a short turnaround for the next meeting because of the Fourth of July holiday, so it'll be difficult for us to have this for your July 8th meeting. So would you consider waiting until, there's not a meeting scheduled for the 15th currently, so it would be for the 22nd of July? If that's too long, we will do our best to endeavor to have it on the?
Let's just do it on the 8th. I think, you know, we have letters coming in, so let's just do it on the 8th.
Okay.
It's not complicated.
So Alderman, that I'm clear, that your request is the staff come back on July the 8th with a draft request of interest for the library parking lot?
Right.
Which the council would then, at that time, debate?
That's correct. That's correct. So we're not approving it tonight?
Point of order, a motion is required for that, to place a special order of business for the, as an RFI. It's not a referral, because it's not going to a committee, it's coming back to council.
It's up to the chair.
We're discussing drafts for a referral. That's she's making. She's asking for it to come to council, not to go to a committee.
Send it to a committee. PND? It's up to the chair.
All right, I'm hearing out of both of us here.
I'm fine with it coming, I mean, you guys referred, you guys have, in the past, referred things to council. We've referred special orders of business related to Harley-Clark, to other items directly, and this is the method in which it's?
Yeah, it just requires a motion and a vote.
It does not.
Our council rules 18.11 and 18.12, it does require a motion and a vote.
May, not must.
You're pointing to make something?
It does, the rule's.
No.
It's a may, not a must.
Could we hear from Corporation Council?
I'd be happy to. So under 18.11, if the council is seeking to create, take any matter that is before the council, so this is, you're now trying to create something, and put it on the next council meeting on the 8th, you need a majority vote, and you're asking that it become a special order of business for the council?
Okay, yeah, it's fine just to refer it to PND, that's?
That is the traditional way.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just hearing different things.
All right, it has been referred, okay.
Did we vote?
We don't need to refer, we don't need to vote on a referral to a committee. No, we need to now, we need to now vote on the, we need to now vote on the motion. So it was put forward, it was seconded, this is A12, Resolution 59-R-19, and this is to receive and file Resolution 59-R-19. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is filed and received and filed on a nine-to-zero vote. Passes, okay. Alderman Braithwaite, can you take us to A13?
Sure. I'd like to move item A13, which is Ordinance 51-0-19, approval to amend the city code 3-4-6, classification and license fees to create a new Class R1 liquor license.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, Alderman Revelle?
I move to hold this item.
Second.
Okay, all right, A13 is held. To the next meeting. Okay, we're now moving on to, I've lost my notes.
Is it P3?
P, yes, thank you. Alderman Fisk, yeah, P3 was taken off, if you can introduce that. Excuse me, Alderman Rue Simmons?
Okay. P3, Ordinance 65-019, extending the time for applicant to obtain a building permit to construct the planned development at 100 and 128 through 132 Chicago Avenue, was for introduction.
Is there a second?
Oh, yes, in action, yes.
This is for the introduction, and so that was, okay.
Alderman Sufferton asked that we have discussion?
I just want to vote no.
Mr. Mayor, could you vote on suspension of the rules?
Yeah, we will, we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Voted on that.
No, it has to be a?
The council, the council does, though.
No. Excuse me, point of order, we voted on that, and Alderman Sufferton voted yes on suspending the rules.
Oh, out of committee, so it came out of committee?
The council has to vote to suspend the rules, because it's before this body.
It was part of the consent.
Both committees would have to do it.
All right, so can somebody just move to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So this item is now for introduction and action. It was moved, it was seconded, seeing no lights. Is there one I need to do? I can do a voice vote on this?
No, it's an order.
It is an order, it is an ordinance extending. It doesn't involve money. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, P3, Ordinance 65-0-19, extending the time for the applicant to obtain a building permit to construct the planned development at 100 and 128 to 132 Chicago, passes the city council on an eight-to-one vote, with Alderman Sufferton voting no. Okay, we're now going to move to call of the wards. Alderman Sufferton?
Nothing.
Alderman Revelle?
Just a brief reminder that there's a meeting tomorrow evening, starting at 6:00 PM, in the Wilson Club of the Welsh Ryan Arena, to discuss with the representatives from Northwestern, their proposal for a zoning amendment.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming, excuse me, Alderman Rainey.
No report.
Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk.
No report.
Alderman Wynn?
Braithwaite.
Excuse me, Braithwaite.
So the two things, you all know, Mr. Leon Robinson's home-going service was this past weekend, very well-attended, exceptional comments made for a very exceptional man who made some wonderful contributions to this town, so I just wanted to lift that up. And then, for those that missed it, at the top of the meeting, July 20th at 2:00 PM, we will have the street naming ceremony for Mr. Jackson on the corner of Lake and Florence. That's it, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. I'd like to make a referral to, I'm thinking it would be rules. We had talked about before, a way to better manage having diversity on our boards, commissions, and committees, and I'd like us to come up with policy to regulate that, some sort of diversity and inclusion, a minimum goal to make sure that we are representing all communities in Evanston. Is that okay?
You made it.
Perfect. And then, a reference for MWEBE, looking at ways if staff could give us some best practices, possibly in other communities, to have progress compliance for large projects. And this is in response to my concerns for Robert Crown. Right now, we are at 9% compliance with a 15% goal, which is a problem for us, and I don't want a chance getting to $50 million spent, and we do not reach our goals. And at this point, we don't enforce any compliance until the project is complete, so I would like to look at ways that we can regulate this differently, and if maybe we can have progress compliance. And I don't even know if I'm saying that right, but I hope I'm clear on what I'm asking. If we can enforce compliance before completion in some way, break the project up into segments, that's what my request is. And I want to say congratulations to all of the NU grads, there was a phenomenal graduation. I was able to attend, it was very inspiring, and I just want to say thank you to all of the graduates that spent their time here in the Fifth Ward. It was my pleasure to be your neighbor and to represent you. Thank you to many of those that I've met that plan to keep your talents here in Evanston, and all the best to you that are moving on with your life. Congratulations. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
I just want to follow up on Alderman Simmons' comments about MWEBE and our large projects. I had a former constituent, but a current Evanston resident, who came to me and said that they had been following new contracts that had been let this year, and went to our staff, asking, "Was there anything available?" And they were told, "No," they couldn't get them on any job. The person then went to one of the jobs, and got themselves on a job. And I found that, and not, not a little piece of the job, but working full-time in a really, a significant position, full-time, still there, over three, four months now. And I think there's something, there's a problem with that. And I think part of the problem is, is that while we say we are, we're watching this and in control of it, I don't think we have the staff or the control over these jobs to really stay on top of it.
I agree, Alderman Rainey. I do believe there's some improvement for outreach, getting the information out there, communicating better to our partners that we're working with. Something's being missed. I just think that it's unlikely that we're $17 million in, and we cannot find the talent and the skilled tradespeople in town to do this work. So I think I've been clear with staff in our MWEBE meeting on what I would like to see, and the responses that I would like to see from Billy and Andrews. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Braithwaite, and then I'm going to go to Alderman Wilson to lead us into executive session.
Yeah, thank you, and I probably, this may not be the best place to respond, but to Alderman Rainey, I would be curious who that individual is, and what the details of the circumstances, so we can pay attention. For those of you who are curious, the details in terms of what jobs are eligible is always printed, I think, I can't remember which week in our city managers' report, and it's pretty detailed in terms of the sheet that Laura puts together, what jobs, or what city-funded projects are LEP-eligible, along with the dollar amount. So there's a clear list that's published, and Sharon does a very exceptional job with the reporting, but to Alderman Simmons' comments, I think there is a shortage of qualified, card-carrying union members in this town, and to answer that, we've partnered with one of our local, community-based organizations to create pathways for residents. I mean, this is something I love talking about, Alderman Rainey, and I would invite you to attend our next meeting and raise those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, can you lead us into executive session?
Yes, pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and litigation. These agenda items are permitted, subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C1, and C11.
All right, city clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Revelle, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
All right, on a nine-to-zero vote, we are recessing into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming up.